Speak into your mic. So they can hear you.
Yes, she is.
There you go.
That's what I see.
She is. Say that.
You got ready to start.
As we said, you just, yeah, we can call the roll while, while here she is. You're just getting ready to call the roll. Instead, we knew the minute we started, you'd be.
All right, I've called a meeting to other, right? So go ahead and call them.
Okay. Ms. O'Connor. Mr. Adi. Yeah, Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. Bodie.
Here.
Mr. Sarge.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Zink.
Here.
Mr. Hatfield.
Here.
Ms. Fuller.
Here.
Board, my apologies for being late. Construction got the better of me and I had to backtrack, so I apologize for keeping you waiting. We will go to the minutes from our last facilities committee meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve, please. So moved. Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Adi. Any discussion? Hearing none. I have to get used to saying your name, Mr. Zink.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. Adi.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Mr. Sarge.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Zink.
Yes.
Mr. Hatfield.
Yes.
Ms. Fuller.
Yes.
And Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Passage, I assume you'll be reviewing the onsite facilities meetings?
Uh, yes. Combination with everybody else that was there, but um, we had a meeting at Freedom, we had a meeting at Woodland and a meeting at Hopewell Junior. Really to review the four options with the community, get feedback, take a tour of those buildings. Uh, those three buildings are one of the 10 that have been identified as being deficient according to the OCC standards. So wanted people the opportunity to get a firsthand look at that. Um, from my perspective, we've had pretty good turnout. We had a new faces that we haven't seen before. Um, so and Betsy informs me of at the meetings in West Freshman, I forgot what freshman as well. And we did a seniors, so we had over 200 people, 203 people attend those meetings to hear about the master plan options. So any.
Bet you even idea like not today, but can you tell how many people clicked the video on the recorded one? Something possible? Okay, yeah, whatever. I just be interested to see if we watched it too.
Yeah, and I can participate in the thought.
Okay.
But I, I think we got very good questions. I know um, Betsy and her team have been working on FAQ um, to try to put together those questions that come up in those meetings who could put them out for the entire public to, to view and see. So so far, so good. I'm, I'm sure we'll have more to come up and we'll talk about that, that at the end of the meeting, but anything else from anybody else who was there? And I, I just shout out to our principals and sister principals. They did a great job with the facility tours and um, trying to get a perspective because they live it and see it every day. You know, Craig and myself, when we get a call or something goes wrong, or we're just doing our, our daily visits or routine visits. We see it, but those principals live and breathe it every day and know the good, the bad, the ugly, the every piece of that building. So they, they did a great job um, informing uh, the, the tours of what their life is like on a daily basis from a facilities perspective and how it supports teaching and learning.
Close to 200 views. That's pretty good. I also thought it was nice to see different faces at our meetings. I mean, there are a couple repeaters, but there were a lot of people that I'd never seen before. So shows that there's interest. Yeah.
I thought it was interesting that there was a lot of um, people with no kids in school that kids have already gone through and a lot of people that kids haven't started yet.
Yeah.
So just try and gauge, get the interest in.
Freedom was pretty heavy that way, right?
Yeah, freedom was very heavy.
Young families.
While we're on the topic, um, are we planning future facilities meetings that we have dates for?
So we're gonna meet with um, our DPC reps and our presidents councils at the September joint meeting of DPC and presidents. I believe it's September 14th. It's that second Wednesday.
I would ask if we could not piggyback off of regular meetings just because that makes for a really long evening and with um, just my little girl and my husband, husband being on, it just makes it a lot easier for us to separate it into two meetings instead of being, being gone for six hours.
Do you mean the committee meetings?
She's talking about, she's talking about the open house for the community.
That'll be during that regularly scheduled meeting.
Sorry, I was talking about um, the, the scheduling of the facilities meetings.
So I'm talking about the community engagement ones that we're doing. So we've got one planned on September 14th, which will be um, it'll start about 10 o'clock in the morning at Lakota West. And so like
That's a DPC, that's a one right.
And presidents. Um, Creek, the new Creekside principal has already reached out. She would like to have us um, do one for her families as well. And then I'm gonna connect with PTOs, hoping to get some combination PTO meetings together. Um, perhaps feeder schools. Um, as well as working with the townships. Um, I'm gonna see what I can do to help get to have them help us promote future meetings.
You have a timeline, Betsy, like when you want to have these meetings completed, what date you're looking?
Well, it's all based on when the board will take their vote on a plan because we want to get as much feedback as possible.
Right.
Um, we have not promoted the four options in the thought exchange very much in August so far because
It's back to school, right?
There's so much that information that we're pushing out. We don't want that to get lost. So once school starts at the end of August into September, we'll start pushing that out a lot more. We did include all of the options in our um, community mailer that started hitting mailboxes this weekend. Um, so there is information in there as well as the links to all of the options uh, for people to watch the videos and then participate in the thought exchange. So hopefully we'll get some play there as well.
And I appreciate a lot of this sounds like it's for our internal community and appreciate those um, opportunities that you're going to provide. I would like to again emphasize, and I've said it before, to make sure that we're also thinking about our external community. And maybe somebody could sum up those outreaches that we've done, just so people know that we have tried to do some outreach to bring in those that don't have direct connections with the schools right now.
Well, I think that's where we've been promoting it. We did the postcard for the first three meetings that we had, and that went to every community member. So that was the West Freshman, Hopewell Junior and Woodland ones were all advertised there. Um, and then we'll also have the quality profile that's going out in September-ish. Um, we will hopefully have some more open community dates that we'll be publishing in there as well. Problem is the um, postcards are very expensive and I'm trying to do this in a fiscally responsible way. Um, I, we did have a meeting with Westchester Township and they are expanding their um, TV reach. They are partnering with Roku and Amazon. Um, and so they are happy to help us promote meetings that way or on their TV channel as well. We could also do videos and they will push that out too. And they were the ones who filmed our um, the meeting in June and at Woodland.
Do they still?
I'm sorry, Lisa, Linda.
Could we consider um, asking other townships? I know Liberty has done a recent community conversation, but not on this topic.
Mm-hmm.
Could we ask them both to host one?
That is on my list.
The chamber is already doing that as well.
Um, the chamber is not doing a, a master facilities one. I can certainly reach out to them.
I think they would be willing to do that.
During the government issues meeting, Joe said he would like to wait until we've narrowed down an option before he has one.
I can drop it when I'm on the panel next week at Chamber too.
Yeah.
Plus we had a good turnout, I thought, from the senior citizens.
We did. I was going to say, we've also met with the senior citizens and we've met with the segment of our business population as well.
And I will say, the questions that have been asked at all of our meetings have been really thoughtful questions, and we have used all of those to add to our FAQ that's on our website. Um, to make sure that the questions that are being asked, everybody can hear them and get the answers.
Right. Thank you. On, on that note, it's as we go forward with some of these that aren't community driven, like the seniors and the business, could, could the rest of the board be informed of when those were an R so that if we wanted to attend those, we could, we were unaware of those two? That just like, not that we can come to, not that all of us can come to everyone, but that it gets us to be able to put it in our calendar so we can kind of pick and choose where, where and when we can come. Thank you, May.
Yeah.
Are there other organizations that you want us, that we haven't mentioned that we, we should reach out to that you can think of? I don't know if, like the Optimist Club or I don't know.
I think.
Optimist.
Oh, yeah.
The Rotary Club would be happy to do something.
I talked to John Graff from Butler Tech last Thursday, so I got him up to speed on where we're at. From a Butler Tech standpoint.
Maybe we can.
Sure, we could do it at the, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The Bioscience Facility if we ask them to host one and bring in Butler Tech families.
We could maybe combine some of those Rotary. I mean, I am an optimist and there are eight people at the meeting, so we don't want to waste our manpower. I'm very optimistic. So maybe we could, can maybe look at combining like some of the the external community groups. I don't know if that's an option or not.
Well, as you come up with, with others and more, we're, we're glad to add us to the roster. If people want to host anything, we're glad to to speak, even if it's a, a light crew, we all can go. Take the show on the road.
So board and committee members, if we think of other groups, let's pass those on to Betsy.
Chris also on the end of table at the Business Expo. We did partner there. So.
Oh, good.
It was quite a bit of traffic.
I had emailed everybody about the, of the Freedom, the Business Expo and the seniors at Lakota West at the end of June. So it may have just been traveling and
Oh, yeah, I didn't get that, but I don't, I don't always get all of my emails. I don't know why.
There are also, I mean, fairs coming up as well and like could that be a booth there?
You mean like at the township festivals? We will be there. We will have information.
Okay.
We will be at the um, the Liberty Township Fall Fest in September and then the Pumpkin Fest in October.
Pumpkin Fest.
Yep. And then there's the um, I believe West holds a craft show.
Well, that'll be in just, is that November?
There's isn't.
I think.
There's is October and what east is November. There, you, if you've never attended one of those.
I've been there.
Oh, my gosh, there's so many people. I don't know if you could find a space to.
I don't know that people will stop, stop for information about the schools. We can certainly have some literature out.
Whatever you think is best.
The other thing is, yeah, we get so many people that are not, they come far and wide, which blows my mind.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Crazy.
All right, word, if we have any other thoughts on that, let's pass them on as, as we're thinking about it too. Um, that's here to Matt. Thank you. Appreciate the outreach. Over the end of thought exchange?
Sure. So I had emailed you a report on each of the four exchanges. You can see they were themed um, as well as all of the thoughts, how they were ranked from the most popular to the least popular. I printed out and put at your seats um, the thoughts and how they ranked for each of the options. So as I mentioned, um, the participation in the thought exchange isn't huge, but I also wasn't expecting that because again, it's summer. Right? And so I would expect that that to um, to pick up as we go along. Did you guys have any questions about them?
Yes, I, I have a question. Um, the way, I'm sorry, the way they rated, um, let's say if you look at the question, that says seems like a Band-Aid approach. Um, five star, what does that mean? Doesn't mean they agree with the statement or against this.
They agree with the statement.
The shading does not show up too well either, so.
Right, so.
Just go by the number.
Yes, exactly. So this is ranked, the Band-Aid approach, I think was ranked not number one. Um, out of 36 thoughts that people added to this exchange. So that was the most popular. People agreed with that the most. And that was for option one, which is our current plan. The go alone.
I'm on like every question.
Let's see, could you walk through kind of a summary for each one of the options and what you thought the takeaways were? Um, everyone doesn't have this in front of them and so that the community can understand that as well.
Sure. So I thought, so with option one, the finances um, and the funding of it got the most the most thoughts were around that. Um, followed by maintenance. This definitely was not the most popular one. Um, there were concerns about it. Let me pull my reports here. Sorry. So definitely finances got the most um, with this one, the most thoughts, grade bands was a distant second. But again, there weren't a ton of thoughts on here. Um, as far as the ratings went, there were, most people agreed with um, the thoughts that were in finances. And again, it was a lot of those thoughts, if you go through our, it's very expensive. It's not the most fiscally responsible. The maintenance ones were along the lines of there's, you know, there's so many buildings and there's going to be a lot of maintenance that we're going to have to do that sort of thing.
And another takeaway I got from that one was that there was no elk money was another of the comments there.
Yep.
So not only that it wasn't fiscally responsible, but that was part of the reason why.
Yep. So in the second one, um, the second one was interesting because only 26 participants shared thoughts on this one. Um, which I thought was interesting. However, more people, 60, there were 60 participants, but only 26 of them actually shared thoughts. The others just ranked. So this one, um, as far as rankings go, educational experience was a popular one. Um, those were questions like they like nine to 12 in a single building. Um, it felt, it feels developmentally appropriate.
Say that one more time.
It feels developmentally appropriate. Um, like having the great, great bands. Mm-hmm. But then if you look at the negatives, then it was, there's still too many transitions because it's only one less than what we currently have.
Another negative that I hadn't, or I guess you could look at it as a positive or a negative that I hadn't thought of till I read the comments was that the new, if we this plan does not include a new high school, and if we did a new high school, that would benefit more kids. Whereas this plan had just a new elementary school and that they felt like that was going to be targeted to just a few few kids in one region. And I thought, I hadn't really thought that one through and I thought that was interesting feedback.
Yeah. So if you look at, as far as the transitions go, if you um, the one side says that there are too many transitions, the other side likes that they're keeping primary kids separate from older kids. They like that four, six building. But it wasn't a lot of people who thought that.
This kind of brings up a good point. Um, I know we're kind of trying to figure out what buildings you know, are best for our students, but I think we need to figure out what is best grade configuration first for our students and then go to the buildings from there. I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to fit different things into different buildings and that's not the most important part. I think what is best for the students by, should we go with the current grade configuration or should we do 12 through um, kindergarten through fifth grade, sixth, seventh and eighth in one building, ninth, 10th and 11th in one building? I think as a board, we should vote on that first before we decide what buildings we need. And then once we decide what grade configuration we want, then we can kind of build on that aspect of it and configure out what the buildings. But there's also other numbers that I feel like are kind of missing from this. And I, I don't know if I should wait to.
Mrs. Bodie, let's wait on that until the board discussion. Let's finish our thought exchange.
That's.
And save those thoughts for when we're all talking through what we think we should be doing.
Okay. Thank you.
So option three is the one where we've got the third shared option, shared, shared building for our high schools. Um, there were the most common again were grade band. Um, they like that the related plus grade bands. I like that there are fewer transitions, like the K5 combo. The grade bands look more traditional. I like the grade level. Those are the top thoughts under that one. Um, so they were very positive. The next highest theme that people heard um, shared thoughts about was educational experience. Um, options, the high school sounds logically complicated. So that was a negative. They weren't quite sure what that shared op, that third high school is going to be like. That third shared building, will this be enough to alleviate congestions at the two schools? I'm not sure that there would be a lot of interest in a shared school, concerned about the disruption during the day. So there's definitely a lot of questions there. Um, but then I think going to the K5 model would be beneficial for working families and bus scheduling, which is something that Chris had mentioned before too.
Um,
Another bit of feedback on that one was that there would be five junior schools, so potentially one would have to be split to feed multiple high schools.
Correct.
So again, is that something that's been addressed yet in that?
Not yet. We know that there would be five in this model and how that would work out. Um, we haven't got quite that detail yet, but
Okay.
The potential is one of them could be a split building or we look at it if the three are larger or two are larger, maybe three and two can equal the same amount and it's just going to be difficult as far as when you look at extracurriculars and that kind of thing.
Sure.
That would run through that logistically.
Okay. Would there be enough, Chris? Is there enough? Is the population enough to have three of one and two of another?
Well, actually, if you look at the high schools and the way they split, you know, if you look at a junior high right now, we definitely have one larger and one smaller one for each east and west. Um, but if you look at the overall uh, numbers between east and west, they're within a couple hundred kids of each other.
All right, okay.
Yeah, they're not too far off, so.
So probably.
There's a fairly good balance, but 200 can be a building or.
Sure, yeah. I want to.
Thought that was part of the thought exchange.
I just want to be sure that we're done. At the time that we need to be done.
So then the final thought exchange um, had the most participation with 108 people participating and somewhat there were 78 thoughts shared. Um, if you look at the themes, um, most of the, most of the thoughts were shared, surrounded finances, then maintenance, then educational experience um, and grade bands. Um, definitely like that there are fewer schools, fewer operating costs. My first thought is that this is the best plan. Uh, grade banding and building plan is ideal, thus for optimal use, that sort of thing. Um, as far as finances go. Um, less buildings to maintain was the top thought under maintenance. Educational experience, I like the two new high schools. It'll support the extra students load that's adding, that adding ninth will bring. Um, new high schools are going to bring a competitive advantage. I like that there's less transitions. Um, do you have any questions about that one?
My perception was that there was more positive and less negative on option four when I read through the feedback is, was, was that your takeaway as well?
Yes.
And this is 60 people responded out of 17,000 students. So that's, but I mean, at least say each one has one parent that's 17,000 people.
Well, again, 108 people pers- participated. We've only had about 200, just over 200 people coming to the meetings. We expected that to be very low.
Yeah.
Because it is the summer and that's why we're going to do a big push this fall. And that's why we're including it in the mailer and we'll use social media. We're going to team up with the townships to help push that information out.
But this thought exchange, exactly. You said 108 people answered or gave feedback. So I'm just trying to put that into perspective. This, I mean, this is.
It's very, it's a very, very small sample.
Absolutely. Great information and I'm, I'm glad you guys did it. But again, this is a very small representation of our community and, and what they're, and their feedback.
Absolutely. And that's why we will continue to promote it and ask people to participate. And we'll reach out to those who have children in our district as well as those who do not. But it's up to them ultimately whether or not they want to share their feedback with us.
And I have no doubt you're not, you, you are definitely trying to reach everyone. I'm just putting it in perspective that, and I know you guys are really working hard on this, but again, these thought exchanges, generally the information that we receive is a very small percentage of people.
Thank you. And we're also more toward the beginning of the process too. Certainly a long ways to go. Other thoughts on the thought exchange board? Any questions about that information? All right. Let's move on to some information. We've been waiting a while for Mr. Passage, the general overview of possible operating cost savings and cost avoidance.
Yes, so on this chart here, there, there's two different things that we're considering really. We're looking at um, the general fund costs and the permanent improvement fund, the PI fund. Um, there are two different funds and a bulk of our work for facilities comes out of these two funds, of course. Um, so we wanted to look at some things from just a general operating that would be done from a daily basis, like your, your, your routine maintenance, your utilities, those type of things that would be in your general operating. Then we look at things like cost avoidance from our permanent improvement fund um, for larger projects that we know we're going to do every year from parking lots to roads, HVAC system. So there's the permanent improvement fund doesn't show up on your five-year forecast, but there is going to be um, opportunity to improve that and extend that fund longer as well. So I wanted to make sure that we included both our general operating fund and our permanent improvement fund as things that could be improved. Um, if we go to fewer buildings. So if you look at the chart here, um, we try to capture, and this is just based off um, the, the last few years, the history, you know, it ebbs and flows every year. You know, like for instance, this year, we, we spent a lot of money at Adena and Liberty Junior on a sewer line that um, failed. So we actually had to go in, dig up the floor, redo the sewer lines. So that's not going to happen every year at Adena in Chinese. Hopefully, but those are things where we see maybe a, a hard in our typical spend for that year. So um, is that right, Craig?
Exactly right. And and it can vary. I mean, each, each year with, with the, the storm damage and you know, the winds and it varies even on the roofing. I mean, we have a, a uh, a 12 year left on our roofing evaluation that the assessment, and it's always changing, just like parking lots. I mean, you can um, basically, we have to juggle each one of those as the years go, even though we have the assessment and and it's a lot of information there, but the buildings change uh, yearly on a priority list, that is.
I have a question about the HVAC expenditures planned. How did you gather those?
Those are based on what we know for life cycles for equipment. You know, those are estimated plans that we have. We sort of do a, like Adam does with the five-year forecast. We do five and 10-year projections about where we think we would need capital expenses. So those are just um, our estimates based on our age of our equipment, what we're seeing with our PMs, um, the number of fixed break repairs we have to do. So we go through that and we're starting looking at, okay, this, this, this chiller is getting kind of old. It's getting past its um, useful life. So we're going to have to replace that at some point over the next uh, several years. So that's all planned out, what we think is going to happen. It could happen sooner, it could happen later. Um, but that's our best guess about where we think we are now based on our current maintenance schedule.
So from these numbers, I'm assuming that Heritage, Shawnee, Freedom and Woodland are older buildings and it's going to cost more to bring their HVAC system up to current code or?
Um, it's not even bringing up the current code. It's really just replacing existing systems. Like for a chiller, you, you're going to get a new, the chiller is going to be new and more up to date as far as its technology and capabilities and efficiency. But if, that's just one portion of the HVAC system that's going to be replaced. So there's different things throughout here where you have um, different variable speed boxes you may need to replace, different um, uh, valves, piping. Um, what else?
No, and, and a lot of that's based on our current maintenance program. So we can look at each piece of equipment, see what's what, tracking what's been some of the repairs and damages as well as uh, our preventive maintenance. So we're doing PMs on all these systems. However, we do see the, a higher trend of work orders, constant repairs and uh, and plus, uh, you know, we have an auditor that will come out and help do an assessment on those as well.
Have you had one of those recently? An audit on the HVAC system?
Um, not as complete of a assessment like we do on our parking lots. Um not as complete of a assessment like we do on our parking lots as well as our roofing. I mean, for example, I mean, we look at east and west and, you know, the age of of those buildings and we just had to replace one chiller west. And those were the original chillers, you know, when the building was built. So you're starting to see even some of our newer uh system starting to not fail, but uh it was more cost effective to do that replacement. Yeah.
I I have feedback, but I don't know when the right proper, right appropriate time is to bring it back on the HVAC system because I've spoke with someone, the executive or the expo regarding the the um HVAC and I would like to information and go from there, but would that be?
Let's finish going through.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
So basically, if you look at it, um on the first part before the solid black line, you got your average estimate operating and you get your utility costs. So those are going to be your annual operating general fund costs. So you're looking at what one point five million dollars a year. Basically from operating costs for utilities and estimated maintenance. For that and then the ones in the middle um between your capital and your big three items are things that would impact your permanent improvement fund if you didn't have to do that. So those are the the big operating pieces here. So other pieces of this chart as well is we have the land value, building value and total value. I just put this on there as a sort of a placeholder to look at that. That this is what the auditor has on his website right now to get sort of give you an idea. This this is just from an auditor's perspective. It doesn't commercial. If we're going to do something with those facilities, you probably have a a commercial um appraiser come in and give you a better estimate about what that would be. But this is just a ballpark idea of what the auditor said those values are for that. So we we have an idea with that, depending on what we want to do, if anything, whatever plan we choose. So just another data point to consider.
Thank you. And that these are the ten buildings that we were potentially tearing down.
Correct. Those are the only ones we focus on are the ones that are being decommissioned.
Do you have the date of the buildings and how old they are?
Yes, I can get that to you.
Yeah, I would like that. That's in the original information we received earlier.
The big package.
Okay.
It's the big package.
Yeah.
Certainly go ahead and
Yeah, I can I can send that to everybody because it has the date of the original building. If there's any additions to the building, it shows all that. So you have an idea about um the original core building itself and any additions that were done or upgrades. So I have a spreadsheet that has that. I can send it out to everybody.
I think the community would also want to see that information, the date of the buildings. I've had that mentioned several times.
Yeah, if not, we can just put that spreadsheet out. It's it's no secret. We can put it out there for everybody to see so they have an idea.
Thank you.
So.
I just wanted to also add that Mr. Sarge is making a good comment about the P I funds. We ended the year with around three point two million dollars in the P I fund. And so if we continue having more and more, we get about six point six-ish million per year in that from our tax revenue with the two mil collection. So if we have to keep doing some of these projects in that P I fund, that is going to start to run pretty lean because we split that with technology as well as capital. And then then you would start seeing that on that capital line of the forecast, or if we did a general fund financing, it would show up down below that. So it would start impacting the forecast.
Right, thank you, Adam.
And that's why I wanted to make sure that was on here too, because if we run out of P I dollars, we aren't going to have general fund dollars to use and that will impact.
Then then we would have a different type debt decision to make or bring it into the general fund.
Um a couple of other things that now we're considering, but we don't really have enough data to give you a good idea about operational savings. So we looked at transportation and look at the various options. Um there's general assumptions that we can make and understand um from a general perspective on on how it would be impacted. But um we don't have the ability to go through and go route and do everything right now. So just to give you an idea, you know, option one's easy. If if we don't do anything new, say with option one, that's what we're currently doing. Um the other three options, there's other things that we could look at, you know, the freshman buildings are eliminated. Um a decision by the board is do we continue to offer freshman transportation? That will greatly impact our our transportation budget, whether we do that or not. Um if we, or if we say we're going to go nine through twelve and offer nine through twelve. So those types of decisions will greatly impact that transportation operation cost. So without having a final plan and a direction from that, I can't really give you an idea if it's going to be a cost savings or a cost add. I can just um say we have some decisions to make down the road as far as um whatever option we go to and what level of service will be provided. So option three, um that's the one where we have the shared uh options building. And and of course, you may think there'll be additional costs if you're running buses all day to doing shuttle services. Um but there could be an offset if you have fewer overall buildings that you're transporting to and become more efficient in that perspective. So it could bounce out, it could be more, it could be less. So it it's really hard to tell too. And again, are we going to transport to the high school, either ninth grader or nine through twelve? I I think it'd be hard from my perspective if if we have a nine through twelve building, say we're only going to do ninth graders. That the standalone freshman building makes sense, but not having that. And option four, um again, the general assumption is uh you have fewer buildings, you have so you can be more efficient in your routing and maybe save uh from that piece. Um but again, um it it depends on what kind of service levels are going to be offered for nine through twelve. And staffing, um we took in a look at staffing. Again, option one, we see the same. We are where we are. And um a lot of it too is based on efficiencies and looking at that. So if we look at staffing, we come up with a final plan and look at how it's going to implement it over several years. You know, there could be an idea where we look at it and say through attrition, we're going to um improve our our staffing that way. So if we bring buildings online, maybe we don't need as many teachers or custodians and people retire. We just don't rehire and that goes away through attrition. Um I I don't think we would want to go through a plan and hire a bunch of people knowing that we're going to have fewer buildings and need less people. So once we have that final plan, we'll be able to work with Rob Kramer, his team, Adam and his team and look at what makes the most sense in in the curriculum. They're going to drive the bulk of the cost with the teachers. So if you have a nine through twelve high school, what does that mean for efficiencies for uh your master schedule and having teachers? You know, you may have um a few teachers less if you if you're have able to teach, let's say, English, you're able to teach nine through twelve English that you don't have that standalone ninth grade English or advanced English at the freshman building can all be done uh with the same staff with probably fewer people. How many right now? We don't know. We'd have to run that drill, but we do believe there are some efficiencies there. And again, just looking overall um in options three, two, three and four, you're going to have fewer buildings. So from a support staff perspective, you're probably going to need fewer custodians, fewer food service, that type of thing. Um and depending if you have seven fewer buildings, you're going to have probably fewer administrators. You may have larger buildings that may, that's give an example for right now, we have four two big ones. You you may have instead of eight administrators, maybe you have six. Something to that effect, so.
Yeah, you could run into a situation where maybe you needed a few less assistant principals per se, you know, maybe one per building like we have now and then maybe a few less there. And all of those things that Chris is talking about right now, those are all going to impact five-year forecast. The staffing, um you could potentially even pick up some in the cafeteria side, which doesn't affect the forecast, but it could affect the lunch prices for our families.
So really, we we think there's opportunities, but um we just, I we I can't define those right now and till we get further down in the process, but I do think there's going to be opportunities for sure.
Yeah, another big area that Chris and I talked a lot about was the, if we could get down to less buildings and have more efficient transportation, that right now is our largest cost in the purchase service section of of the forecast. We're around eighteen, nineteen million in there. And so that is probably going to be one of the biggest places where we can pick up some value.
Any questions about this spreadsheet?
Chris, if I'm looking at this correctly, approximately in approximate savings would be around twenty-four million in terms of the operating cost and maintenance for these for these buildings.
Between the operating and the general adopery, general fund and the permanent improvement, yes.
Around twenty-four million. Okay. And if I understanding correctly, Chris, that you would be able to take a deeper dive into operation cost once we pick a plan.
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, I think uh taking a deeper dive in operation deeper dive into um all the logistics and what that would really mean, um we can definitely get into fine details on that for sure.
Anybody have any further questions on this document? No. Are you gathering, I'm sorry, the twenty-four million? If you look at the district totals and add those going across. Okay. I don't see twenty-four million on here.
It's not written on there.
She just added it.
I just added.
Okay.
So what did you add? Sorry.
The bottom line, all those district totals, the bottom line.
Okay, to this black line. Not that.
Any other questions? All right.
That would definitely be a nice relief for the P I. And then we could stash some money back for that so that when these buildings needed repairs, we'd be ready to go.
So let's not use the term stash. Let's say, set that money aside for future needs.
Sorry about that.
Underneath the mattress.
Yeah, it's it's kind of sounded like underneath the mattress. We don't do that.
But that number could also increase if we decided to sell the land as well.
So, any further questions on this document?
No, that's what those prices are.
All right. Board, as we look at number six and anything else from our staff or that Matt wanted us to know? All right. We we have limited time, but um we're certainly going to make time for everyone to be able to speak and to ask their questions. Our goal today is not, there's no vote. And we are probably not going to come down to anything formal. This is just a general informal discussion. What do we each think about the options that are in front of us? And what are we leaning toward? And is there additional information anyone needs before we do consider a final vote? So I'm going to kick us off, if that's okay. I've got some questions and it might help answer questions for other people too. And a few comments as well. So as I look at the not the options in particular yet, but as I look at the ALP funds, Chris, what I understood you to say in a former meeting was um basically, when we look at using the ALP funds, thirty percent of our ta- costs, and again, these are general numbers, ballpark, thirty percent of our cost are bringing our buildings up to standards from the OFCC. I heard you say that in a earlier meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. We we look at
I'm making a general statement, not opinion.
That total cost, a big chunk of that is taking those existing buildings that are going to remain, not the ten here, but the existing and bringing all those up to current. So that is a big chunk of that five hundred million in those plans. So about thirty percent of it.
So for me, I'll I'll say very much upfront that as much as I like some of these options, much better than others, the five hundred million price tag for me is it's not doable, it's not acceptable. I'm I am really struggling with the price tag. So what I'd like to suggest is what we consider today and maybe what we talk about is not so much the cost of what we're doing. But what options do we prefer? And then how can we make that to be a more manageable piece for our taxpayers? Because that is a lot of money. So let's not think about the cost today, just ask questions about it, but not making decisions based on cost. I think deciding our configuration, what do we think about those is probably our best route. And we're at this moment, the amount that we would get from the state would be twenty-nine percent as of. All right, okay. So for me, it does raise a question about not a question necessarily, but certainly a consideration. Do we decide to go without funds or not? That's still on the table for me because of that additional cost that we have to do to bring the buildings up to code. Uh what I don't see in here, and I'm I'm sure we could figure it out here, but if we were to sell these lands, some of them, it could be up to forty-nine million in operational savings or in savings that could go toward the plan. Correct?
Yes, you could use
Based on these numbers, which you've already said are based on the auditor's numbers and not necessarily on what we could get for that in a sale price.
Correct.
Okay. Uh Adam, thank you for the comments on the permanent improvement fund. That certainly needs to be a consideration that we have. And also for the comments about the eighteen to nineteen million in transportation that we currently spend. So what I've narrowed down to, and and I think there are, you can bring positives and and negatives and a lot of our community has already brought those forward in their thoughts. I think that um the plan that has the thing that that most aligns to my thinking is going to be the configuration in four. I really think it's important to have the nine through twelve buildings come together again. I think it's really important to have fewer transitions for our families and for our students. I think it offers great opportunities, just for example, our kids that could be taking a higher level courses but don't want to take that time out of their normal work, their normal school day in order to do transportation from the freshman building to the ten through twelve building. Currently, I think it's greater student opportunities, which is something we always need to consider. Um I do love the flexibility of the third, of the option three and the whatever we would decide to do with that building. But I have to say, I think it's more of a want than a need. And can based on price tags, I would struggle to support that particular piece, but I really like the thought that we could do something with it. Um busing is a huge piece in efficiency with fewer campuses. So option four is what I'm more comfortable with in terms of configurations and feeling like that best meets the needs of the district at this point in time. But I'm also open to what my fellow board members have to say. Is there somebody would like to go next, Mr. Edie? Not yet. All right, this is Gasper.
Um I quit, I don't know if this is, if we're there yet, Chris, but two things for me is I I almost feel like I need to work backwards. I almost feel like I need to know where we are as a board on making a decision. I don't need to know the date, but kind of where we are at making decisions so that we can kind of back up the community feedback and the ALP program if we decide to go that way because we do know we want to lock in the highest that we can get. So that's just one thing for me. The other thing is that the nine, the nine to twelve busing, if we go to, I agree with you, if we go to a nine and twelve building and we I think it's ludicrous to say we're only going to take your ninth grader and your tenth grader has to get away there. But that said, if we do busing nine to twelve for us, then we bust nine to twelve for all parochial schools, correct?
All eligible ones.
All eligible ones.
We would have to.
Yeah, by state law. So that's a, you know, how is that going to even out or what's that going to do to the cost? I like, my favorite grade configuration is four. I like that grade for just saying, for all the same reasons. The fewer transitions, I think at this point, um I know in some of the thought exchange that they like the ninth grade standing, but I think that the ninth grade would do better back in the building with the ninth to twelve for leadership reasons, for all kinds of reasons. I also like the shared campus, but my concern in that option becomes that fifth junior high. We've worked so hard to clean up the boundaries. I don't want to go back to where we have a building where when those kids leave, half will go to east and half will go to west. I I I think that again, we've worked really hard to clean up those boundaries, took a long time. Took years. I mean, we just literally finished cleaning up.
Can I just ask a clarifying question then? On that piece? If we got back for juniors and still had that third option.
Yes, that would be more appealing to me if we did four juniors and then the shared campus. I I like the great configuration of four. And like Mrs. Schaefer though has mentioned in the past about three, the concern for four and the shared building becomes how much instructional time we lose by transferring kids back and forth all day. But for me right now, if I had to pick, I would pick option four. But again, I kind of would like to have a discussion on where we think, how we, when we think we're going to get to that point. That's all for me.
Thank you. This is Schaefer and this is Bodie. Do you want to go next?
Um again, it it was interesting, the feedback, you know, to read and have some different thoughts. As I mentioned, a couple of the items that were mentioned were that the new high schools, if we go with that option, benefit more students and pretty much everyone in the district then has an option to get to that point um and see the benefit of this plan. Again, the five junior schools is a concern. And when I looked at the feedback for option four, there was a lot of discussion of fewer transitions, a better family environment, which I thought was interesting. Like if you have multiple children, they can be in the same environment and older child can provide leadership potentially for a younger child uh and the efficiency. And I think also when we're looking at this and we're looking at the financials of this and the ALP, I definitely would like to be able to take advantage of the ALP if we can get the state to provide twenty-nine percent of the funding. And we also need to remember that the timing of this due to the hard work of the treasurer's office and paying off bonds. And we also need to remember that the timing of this, due to the hard work of the treasurer's office and paying off bonds early, gives us some different options that we might not ever otherwise have by being able to roll off bonds and have that savings offset any expense of updating our buildings. So we have to make sure that we understand that's not all additional costs that people are going to have necessarily. It's going to be offset by some savings that they're going to see by bonds expiring. Um, so I think based on the feedback and sort of where I had been prior to reading the feedback, it just reaffirmed and almost even reaffirmed it stronger because they had some different thoughts that I hadn't even had. Option four does look to me to be the most palatable, recognizing that this is limited feedback. But I still think we can all use our judgment as well as that feedback that I imagine it's going to be pretty similar as that pool is extrapolated based on how strong this feedback seemed to be and pretty universal. The things they liked about option two and three were captured in option four. And it felt like the thing they liked the least was status quo as to where we are right now. Um, so my sense was I like option four. I don't want to put a Band-Aid on it. As some people said, the, and the feedback for some of these other options. If we're going to do this, we need to do this. So this is a long-term plan and not a short-term solution.
Just for clarification too, for when we look at this, say, use 500 million is that price tag for most of them in the ballpark? If you decide to go with ALP, you know, you only have to raise what's going to be looking funded. So you take the 145 million off the top of that. So you're down to three something and you gotta decide, add it at three, what do you really want to do, what is really necessary?
Right.
So even though the, the plan is 500 million, it may not even be close to that at all. So you, you need to, we need to start around the three something million as far as where, where we want to be and pare down from there. We want a smaller price tag.
I think there's work to do that way.
So, and, and again, it has the most operational efficiency potential, even though we haven't quantified that yet. I think there's a great deal of opportunity there for efficiency and those offerings. Like when I look at offering a third high school, it's to expand opportunities for students. But with the size of our high schools, I think we have the opportunity to do that within our high schools as they currently exist. And maybe have some specialized programs at east or some specialized programs at west, but give students the opportunity to do that type of travel rather than creating a whole nother building.
Okay, so again, I, I kind of am going to echo, first of all, it was interesting that some of the points that I mentioned earlier, you echoed. So I, we're, we're thinking kind of along the same lines. Uh, number one, I am concerned again with the price in front of, speaking to someone in the community that has been in this industry of construction and building. There are concerns from the community that have been presented as far as the price has gone up like 75% since 2019. And I'm not sure if that's realistic or not because our, the building industry has not increased 75%. So that, I know there's numbers for contingency and escalation dollars added, but that price is a little concerning again. And I don't really think that the community is going to have the buy-in at that, at, at these numbers currently from the feedback that I've received. Um, so I would like to, again, what I was saying earlier is I feel like we're all agreeing that we should go back to kindergarten through third or sixth or wait, fifth grade, sixth, seventh and eighth in one building and nine through 12. And I don't know if that's something you guys would be willing to vote on this evening as far as just going to the grade configuration and taking out the dollars like you suggested and just saying, what do we feel is best for our students and then going from there? Because there's a, there's also feedback on the high schools and building brand new high schools. So I was kind of relaying it to the fact that I came from, um, I lived in coming, coming Georgia for 17 years. And the land was, I mean, since my husband went to high school there, there was one high school. And then when he left, there were four high schools when we left. But we're not like that county or we're not like Forsyth County. We have a limited growth. Um, we have Liberty Township that is going to grow, but again, some of the plans coming forward are not residential. There may be more for retirement homes possibly or for businesses as well. So we're, it's not like we're going to expand tremendously, but we will have some growth, but then it will be declining in the next like 15 years from, from what I understand. So I am wondering if maybe we added on to the high schools, would that allow for ninth through freshman? And I know I speak, I spoke previously because I didn't have a full understanding of what for me, when I see an addition, I just see like a house and you're adding something on and it starts kind of falling apart. But the feedback that I got is if they are, um, if the buildings are block exterior and the height and they have heights, so the high schoolers have a block exterior which lasts a really long time. And um, then the height of the buildings at, is easier to add on additions versus some of the older buildings like west might be a little bit harder to add on because they're lower west freshman campus because it's a lower building. And so the conditions aren't, I guess you would say ripe for adding on. So, but again, I think us, I think we need to decide what is best for the students, not what buildings, not decide what, by the building for what is best for instance, but what is best for their education, is it going to be, you know, reconfiguring the, the grades and then, and then go from there and take out the dollars? Because like you said, throw away the dollars for right now, we need to figure out what is best for the students configuration wise and then go from there. Fine, that was not, do you guys feel like we could vote on maybe K through six would be the best, seventh, eighth and sixth, seventh and eighth?
So before we have that discussion, let's let Mr. D speak.
Okay, well, I'm not done yet then.
Okay, but we're not talking about a vote yet when Mr. D hasn't spoken.
That's what my question is, is would you want to vote on that or not? That what is best for the students is your reconfiguration? Are you comfortable with that?
This is Bodie, I'm going to ask again before you put board members on a spot.
She, she would like to let everyone weigh in before we. I would like to get everyone's way in before I answer that question.
And let everybody have a chance to talk. So do you have some further thoughts?
Yes, I do. Okay, so the HVAC system, in the meantime, speaking to the timeframe of when are we going to make these decisions? Some feedback that I was, that I received from a general, from um, the company at the expo was from my understanding, we have basically like four or five people going around to all the schools trying to fix, I guess, like the HVAC or the systems, because we have a really small team compared to what we would really like to um, kind of evaluate the schools and, and any issues that are going on. Am I correct on that? Is there like a team of three or five?
Within our maintenance group, we have five to six technicians that are dedicated to preventive maintenance, work orders on our systems, internal, so we don't have to spend as much uh, purchase services to, to get contractors to come in.
And all.
But when we do have to, we have different accounts set up with those individuals and companies for further assistance.
Okay.
Yeah.
So some of the information that I received was we're kind of waiting on repairing things and fixing things till we know exactly what we're doing with the master's facilities plan. Because if we're tearing down a building, we don't want to spend a lot of money trying to fix it up.
I believe we're still doing normal maintenance.
We are still doing normal maintenance. Yes, yeah, we can't let it go because, uh, you know, from that standpoint, you know, with now the kids are slowly coming back in the doors this week and, and full-time next week, we still have to maintain those systems, but it's about looking at forecasting when you want to replace them. So we're trying to get as long, as much longevity out of what we have um, with our current staff and doing our assessments that, you know, Chris and I do, as well as having uh, that one vendor that helps do the assessment. Uh, but then we've also that, that person, that one vendor, they've been reaching out to us also because we're not, we're doing it in-house, keeping our repairs and our systems going, assessing what we have, but also looking at other vendors to see what their thoughts are. Because they're wanting to come in and, and give us that 15 to 20 year plan where we know we will be there, but it's really dependent upon where we go from this point, on those specific buildings that maybe, may or may not be replaced or.
I just, I believe that there are some challenges there with the small team trying to keep up with 23 buildings.
It, it does present challenges. Uh, we, we do have, our maintenance team total was around 17. Uh, we have six of those specifically for the HVAC side. So it does present challenges. Uh, we, we, we have a good staff, but they're being very busy at this time of year.
Yeah. So that was just a concern. I just, I, I trust that you are doing what is best for the students with HVAC and all of that, but that was something that was just concern that we're, some of, some of these things that we're waiting on to do because of the master's facilities plan. So a date would be very beneficial, but again, who, I honestly, like, there's so much to decide. That would be really hard to narrow down. And then there was something you said, but I forget what that was. Um, but let me see, sorry, let me look at my notes real fast. Um, yeah, again, I think we just need to figure out what is best for the students and, and, and I think there are other options than what is being presented right here. If we decide that we want to go back to a certain grade configuration and then we can go down and the land values and building values, I was like going to ask for that because I think there is potential that we could sell those buildings. We don't have to hold on or that property, we don't have to hold on to that property. We can sell it and, and make money off of it and put it back towards um, the students. So I think that's something important that we need to decide on.
Mr. D?
Yeah. Okay. Um, I, I have been struggling between option three and, or option four. Um, uh, this your breakdowns uh, help a lot because uh, I can realize that major part of the cost, whether we're eliminating or we're avoiding is going to be based on staffing and transportation. I can see like in transportation, option three, been doing that favorite, but there are other things here that I can upset the difference between that and option four. Uh, same thing in staffing. So one of the concerns I got through from the community is basically the amount, the, the dollar amount at the end of the day, uh, which I believe option four is, is the highest in the 500s, right? So their concern is how much is it going to be? Is one of the questions I was going to ask uh, on the board meeting today. Bottom line is how much would the in, impact be on tax at the end of it all? And that is where the decision is going to be, be more because the difference between the two to me is not much between three and four. Because one offsets the other.
Do you mean the difference to taxpayers?
Yeah, what?
When you say the difference in tax, what do you mean?
Yeah, what would the final impact be on tax? On, on the community?
On taxpayers, okay.
Yes, on taxpayers.
Okay.
Do you want me to go into that a little bit now, or do you want me to hold until we get to the meeting?
I think the person that has the question will be here. So maybe I'm going to ask that question during the vote meeting.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Anything else?
I remember what I was going to say a second ago, sorry. Um, the ELP dollars, we don't have to use those from what I understand. We don't have to use those for the whole thing. We can just use those on new buildings. So in order to say demolish or update other buildings, we don't have to apply for funding for those buildings. We can say, we're just going to use that funding for these buildings and go by the codes for that building. And we can update the other buildings as far as we need to and not have to fall in line or worry about following, following the, the OFCC standards to get, we don't have to covet the whole thing under those tax dollars. We can um, do it for just the new buildings. If I'm not, that's what um, I was informed.
I don't. Yes, I don't think that's right.
Uh, I.
You have a look on your face that says that's new to you?
No, I'm, I'm making sure I try to understand it. Um, so when you pass your master facilities plan and you, and you, your number comes up and you get funded and you use those dollars like expedited local partnership. It's expedited, so use our monies first and our monies we get back. Long as it's part of our master facilities plan, we'd use those monies. So an example, um, and Jim is well, well, Mason, they were part of the L program when they built their high school and um, early childhood school, they did that piece. And they got a bunch of credits when they did that. And uh, was it 12, 13 years later, they wanted to do additions to their early childhood, they want to do a total renovation of their middle school. So didn't have to go back to their taxpayers to do that. It was part of their master plan that eventually we need to add on, we need to do an upgrade to our middle school. And they use those L dollars to do all those renovations that the state provided. It didn't have to go back to their taxpayer base to do those improvements to those buildings. So that could be an example where if we go through L, whatever option we use, whatever credits we gain, we can go back in any of our existing buildings right now. If we need a, a new roof, new chiller, new things that we need to do to bring that up to speed, that's going to be part of our plan anyway. You could use those dollars for that.
Where if we, we had 100 million.
I don't, let me, let me see if I can clarify.
Is that?
What I think Mrs. Bodie is saying, I think Mrs. Bodie is saying, can we take part of what we're planning to do out of the master facilities plan that's submitted to the state? And do the rest ourselves? Is that what you're saying?
Because it potentially could be cheaper because in order to um, add on or bring these buildings up to code, we're going by the ELP, am I saying it right? ELP standards or the?
OFCC standards, which are pretty normal. They're not like outrage.
But if we want to save money, there's the option of going to our own knowledge, you guys are very knowledgeable, you understand what it would take to kind of be, bring these buildings up to operating code. And honestly, it would be helpful to know what buildings, the date on these buildings, because I, I'm concerned about knocking down so many buildings. And, and that's the feedback that I'm getting. A lot of people are concerned about, do we really need to bring, take down all these buildings? So I mean, again, it would, it would really change a lot of these, a lot of this. I know there's been a lot of work put into this, but there's other opinions out there and there's other options out there. This isn't the only option. And I, I think we're looking at this, which is great and it's organized. But if we decide to go through K through fifth grade, sixth, seventh and eighth, ninth through 12, then we can decide and look in our buildings and say, okay, these are actually, do not need to be knocked down. I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying it would be a whole different direction of looking at this. But we don't have to use, from what I understand, we do not have to use the OFCC dollars on the whole thing. And we could potentially save money if we don't have to bring them up to their standards and because some, I don't know what they are. There's, again, I looked it up online and it is a huge, long list, so. But there, but we could save money that way. And I think there's um, opportunity from the feedback from someone who's been in construction for over 20 years and has had to deal with tax dollars. This is another option that we might want to think about. Because again, we could save more money and we could use the OFCC funds, L funds, just on the newer buildings. And we could save money on adding to the other additional buildings.
So I think the question is if the district is planning to do all of these parts, does the district have to submit all of these parts on the master facilities plan that we turn in to OFCC? Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm interpreting you correctly.
I, I know you don't have to. I know, I know from what I was told that we do not have to.
You say yes, no question. Let's let them answer the question.
Yeah.
If you can.
And Jim may have helped me on this too. So how I, so why, how I understand, you, you have a master plan, whatever you, you have in your master plan is your master plan. You don't have to fund that. You don't have to do everything in it. You can do what you want. You can parcel out what you want to do. So if we want, or we want to do a portion of our master plan, we go out and we get funding for that. We'll still get credit for that. We can use that fund to help support that master plan again. So you don't have to fund the entire master plan all at once. You can parcel out and do it, then use that money to, to again, but still it's one plan uh, at the end.
Right, but you can just take certain parts out and apply for funding.
I, I think what you're, what you're asking is, is there again, the intent of the OFCC is to totally reset buildings. So if you want to keep some of your existing buildings and not do the, spend the 30 million dollars bringing that up to code, you can do that. You can do a partial reset, but there again, you're not really resetting that building. You're doing a partial kind of a Band-Aid approach on it. So there again, the OFCC program is trying to reset basically every building to a certain standard. So it's set for the next 30 years.
And, and we don't necessarily need that. I mean, we've, I went to a building that was way older than any of the buildings here presently, when I went to high school and it was fine. So I just want to make sure that we're making the most money conscious decision. Um, and that there are looking at other options. So this is a great plan and you guys have spent so many hours on this, but there's also other options out there that we could potentially. But there's also other options out there that we could potentially look at to save money. Use the funds that you want to use, but not have to spend more money than there, than being, that's, that's required.
Yeah, and the, the approved projects that they have is where we would accumulate those credits. That then we would be able to use on only the projects that they'd also approved. So then it would kind of be self-funded if we did that with the other buildings.
Okay, so to finish up what I was saying before, uh, so I know we're not going to vote on it today. However, I had, if you from the beginning, um, like option three. Like I said before, I want to see bottom line, the impact that it's going to have between the two, between three and four. The impact bottom line that is going to have on taxpayers, that's all I can, I'm concerned about.
Kim, kitten, Mr. Adi, Mrs. Councilor?
I understand what you're saying, is that a reality to be able to do that and?
Are you asking right now, option three is four hundred and ninety-one million and five, and option four is five hundred and two? So that eleven million dollar difference, what does that mean to the taxpayer over that thirty years?
Yes, yes, I think, yes, that's what I would love to know.
At eleven million dollars over thirty years is probably not a whole lot, but it's.
Yeah, but if the difference between the two is not much, you will see that option four is the best. So, um, that will help me make my decision based on, on that.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Adi. What, are there any further comments?
I guess, I just have another question. Based on your knowledge of working within this industry. Do you feel that not bringing buildings up to code? Not participating with OFCC or the ALP will save us enough more than that twenty-nine percent that they would participate with? And provide long-term solutions that that would be a good option?
Um, I think your best option is go with the OFCC. I think that'll pay off well for you because I think you have buildings that do need work on them, you need to reconfigure, you need some new buildings. So I think the OFCC is a good plan, it's worked out very well for other districts and I think it's going to work out very well for you also. So I, I think it's a, I think it's a real, uh, opportunity for you. Particularly since you're up, they're up, the state shares up to around the twenty-nine, thirty percent. That's, that's a, that's a pretty darn good deal. And that'll really pay off in the future if you build some of your new schools through the ALP. You'll find that you get a big chunk of money from the state and you'll be able to do things without going back to the taxpayer. So, yeah, I think it's a good deal for you.
Can I confirm that you are the organization that put all of these numbers together?
No, I did.
You did?
Yes.
And then, so I have a booklet. From an, an architectural organization, is that your organization? Okay, thank you.
All right, board, we have a lot to consider. Uh, we have some further community engagement that needs to take place or that is going to take place. So let me ask the board, is there a pressing desire to take a vote on this tonight?
I would like a motion that we decide the best configuration for.
This is a committee meeting, you can't make a motion.
You can make a motion at a committee meeting. You made a motion to approve the minutes, you made a motion to start.
We don't normally take board action other than opening it and closing it.
Cause we're not in front of the public for one thing.
But it's open to the public and it's being viewed, so we can make a motion.
To take a vote tonight.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I do not, I would like to gather additional community feedback. As we said, our sample size is still relatively small. While I have an inclination of where I'm leaning currently, I could certainly be dissuaded from that if we get additional feedback. So I would not like to move forward at this point.
Mrs. Bodie?
I mean, I would like to, to figure out what would be best for the students besides basing it off of a building. And I think, um, I would like to vote this evening on what we think would be the best for our students. Do we want to go through K through fifth grade? Sorry, I struggle with that, K through fifth grade, sixth, seventh and eighth, and then ninth through twelfth. Is that what we feel would be best for the students? And then we can go from there and, and look at the numbers. But I think we need to decide what we feel would be best for the community and best for the students first. And I'm okay with voting, because you can, on what we feel would be the best. Do we want to go through what we are currently, K through second grade, third through sixth grade? Do you think that's best for the students in the community or what I said previously, so?
I still think there's more information to be gathered out there before we make a vote.
Mr. Adi?
Yeah, I also already expressed my concern about voting tonight because I still have some questions I've not answered. Um, if I get those answers, then I'd go back to the community and give that feedback. That will help me make my decision, so I don't want to vote tonight.
I mean, I think too that we have all expressed in some sort of. Way that we're leaning towards four, which is the gray configuration, so.
But I'm not including everything that was with that, I'm just including the gray configuration. Can we agree that we feel like that would be best for the students regarding what community is?
I think you said that several times, I, we got that point, so.
Talking to Kelly.
I, I mean, I, I don't. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. And what I'd like to say is I've heard the board express several times, they would like to see some dates on the calendar for when we'll be considering a vote. I think that's transparent to our community. So what we'll do, having had this conversation, is we will get together and have a conversation with Mr. Miller as well. About what that looks like and put a calendar out to the board with what we're thinking.
I'm sorry, but you do not, you run this meeting, but when people have information and discussion, then you cannot stop that discussion. It is not your responsibility to stop this.
You're out of order in your comments.
I am not out of order.
You're out of order in your comments. All right, board, are you all comfortable with that? Calendar, we'll get that out to the board and then you can provide feedback about it. If there's any further information that you feel that you need besides what we've talked about with community engagement. Please let Chris now, and Chris, if you'll forward any information that's requested to the entire board, so everyone stays in the loop. Anything else, Mr. Zink? I'm sorry, just one moment, Mr. Zink?
No, I've got a few things that I'll gather, answer a few questions on the tax stuff, so. And I'll share that with the entire board as well.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, the calendar that we're talking about is Betsy's calendar? Or like a calendar that we're, the day we're going to vote or the day we're going to?
We'll look at what we need to do in line with the ALP process and what that looks like and what the recommendation is from our administration. And then put it back out to the board and obviously the board makes the final decision on it. So it'll just be a recommendation. Anything else?
All right, I'm going to adjourn and board, we will meet back here at six thirty.